What's that?
I don't want to print out the agenda.
Oh, well, it makes sense. We have a review improvements of October 2nd, 2013. Move to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2013. Any discussion or notations? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Financial statement.
Good evening. We have tonight the October report. And we have a couple of variances. On page two, you will see that nature's classroom is over by $687.97. And that was due mostly to the new contracted change we have in the teacher's contract, where the teacher's stipends went from $50 today to $100 a day. Also on page two, our computer registers are over by $1,205. This was because we moved from a standalone server in each school to cloud computing, so we have to pay that fee every year now. That's for our Reddicker student database, but the cloud gives us a lot more access, especially to the principal and the assistant principal. They can access that from any device, from anywhere. And it also is better for the district to compile district reports. On page three, we have two small variances. Our psychological supplies, our psychologist supplies, went over by 4814. And our nursing supplies went over 3706. So we have small variances there. I also wanted to let you know that we, our bus contract ends this year, in June. So we went out with the Franklin County schools, and we went out for a joint bid. That will be awarded on November 19th at the Franklin County Technical School at 11:00 a.m. And so we will be bringing that to you next month for award. We have eight warrants tonight. One, the fiscal agent payroll for October, the monthly expenditures, a school lunch warrant, full day preschool expenses, daybreak expenses, school choice, which is mainly our tuitions, and after-school. And we did get a progress billing for the doors, which will be paid from the capital projects budget. Any questions?
Does that mean doors are in process by progress?
Next week. Yep, we're gonna start, hopefully, next Friday, we're looking at it.
Thank you. The computer register is just a one-time charge?
No, that'll be, it'll be every year, because we, it's sort of, we're renting a server now, instead of having a separate server in each school. So we will adjust the budget going forward to make sure that we accommodate for that charge.
Public comment? Just the quiet public. Unfinished business? Nothing to discuss or vote on? New business, budget timelines?
You have before you the budget timelines for this year. You will be getting your budget books, they'll be distributed in December. We've met several times as principals together, and with Patty, and with Scott Paul, and Bob Lesko, and Karen Fernino, to go over expectations. It's always lovely to try to predict your budget to you in advance, but that's what we're doing. So I just wanted you to have a sense of where we are in that process. We're gonna keep going on the next item, or?
Sure.
Last month, I brought to you a draft plan for a school emergency evacuation plan. And I said that I would be bringing it back to the principals for any feedback. The only feedback I got was to make sure there was a little bit more detail. That was included in your email packets, about identifying the bus companies and phone numbers. So I'm bringing it to you now, because I've distributed it to all of the school committees. It's the same one, if you can't put your fingers on it, it's the same one that you had last month. It just has the phone numbers of the bus companies listed. That's the only change.
Does that just time line, I said, there's nothing new or different about it this year? You're just putting it out?
Just providing you with the information, yeah.
No major changes?
No major changes, right.
So the primary change in the evacuation plan is the addition of phone numbers?
Yeah, the addition of the names and phone numbers. And again, this is, so if it was a catastrophic event, an event with a railroad, or a spill on 91, or something, to that nature.
And do you assemble a crisis team?
Yeah, each of the schools has a crisis team, and then we spell it out in here. Who's the point person, who's the person contacting the police, who's the person contacting the bus company, who's the person contacting, dealing with the public, et cetera. So I just think it's good to revisit a lot of safety and evacuation plans. Obviously, you know, hope for the best, and prepare for the worst. But, so, you know, I periodically will be bringing you updates on safety issues.
Any other questions on evacuation plan? Going on, the calendar, change current conference days.
This we are bringing to all the school committees. So what had happened is, as you know, we went from three conference days in the spring last year, to two conference days in the spring this year, with the caveat that parents could request a conference with their child's teacher if the information on the report card warranted that. And so that not everyone needed to have a second parent conference. And I believe, I wasn't here for that, but I believe part of the reason for going to two days was for that very reason, that it wouldn't be the same number who had conferences in the fall. Having said that, they chose two dates that unfortunately, that report card won't not even have been issued. So if we're telling parents, please make an appointment with your child's teacher if you have concerns based on the report card, they should have their report card. So the report cards will be given out in the early part of April. So the requests, and also this conflicts with MCAS testing, and frankly, in some schools, PARC testing. So we just thought it was too much, and this would ease the burden and make it more meaningful for everyone if we switched the conference days to April 10th and 11th. So the other elementary school that I brought it to is Whately. You are the second, and then next week, I have Sunderland and Conway. So Whately approved it, and so that's what I'm asking for your approval. And I'm kind of looking to the teachers who were here. Is that your understanding? Okay, no. Okay, okay. But that the conferences were to be reduced from three to two, because it wasn't going to be 100?
They were reduced last year.
They were, okay.
I understand that last year was generated from another town, who's population felt that three days was not necessary.
Okay, okay. But I think it's important, if you're asking parents to schedule a conference, that they have their report cards in front of them.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
And I guess we'll find out if two days is enough?
I guess so.
There's a nice debate in New York Times today, and I was interested about, is the parent-teacher conference worth it or not?
Oh, really?
I didn't have time to read it, but. It's one of those, you know, multiple contributors.
Sounds like room for debate.
Literally, the headline is something as direct as, "Is the Parent-Teacher Conference Worth?"
Maybe they can get it by a text message instead.
Personally, I think it's worth it.
What's that?
Sometimes conference calls happen.
Communication. So I would entertain a motion to amend Union 38 school calendar to change current conference days from March 20th and 21st to April 10th and 11th, 2014? Right. It's coming sooner than you'd think.
That's right, oh, yeah. It is 2014, it says 2013, that's it.
I think it's past Jamie.
It wasn't, it was Ken.
Oh, it was Ken, yeah.
What's that?
I thought that was Jamie who said that.
That was their correct?
No, no, I was just entertaining a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Your calendar has been amended in two towns now.
Thank you, thank you.
And November 5th in-service events?
Yeah, we, as you know, we had a full day in-service last week, last Tuesday, on voting day. And included in your agenda was the, for all the events, the teachers had an opportunity to participate. And I'm bringing to your attention, because, you know, as I've said to the other school committees, I think sometimes we have a tendency to look outside our own district for expertise, when we really need to be looking more within, because we have so much expertise within this district. So we give a lot of kudos to Louise Law and Sarah Mitchell for organizing this. They contacted teachers from all over the district, and many of the elementary were paired with secondary teachers. I really like that model. And, and I, you know, the feedback, we were reviewing it today in the principals' meeting, the surveys that were sent out, the amount of satisfaction, especially from the morning activities, was extremely high. The other thing I'd like to point out to school committees is it cost us almost nothing. Oftentimes, you'll get a speaker from, you know, hundreds of miles away, and have to spend thousands of dollars, and I think this was much more rewarding. So I just thought it was worth bringing it to your attention, and having you take a look at some of the variety of workshops that were presented.
Certainly looks like a busy day. Were all workshops attended?
There was only one that had less than three in it, that had to be canceled. So yes, many of them were extremely well-attended.
Enrollment trends?
I believe, David, it was you last meeting, I believe it was you, who had asked to look at. So I probably provided you with more data than you would care to have. But, you know, I think it's worth taking a look at. The first sheet gives your resident student enrollment, and it's pre-K through 12. And then at the bottom has the school choice enrollment, and this is from 2004 to 2013. So you can get a sense of what our numbers are looking like. Some towns obviously have more school choice than others. Some budgets rely more on the school choice dollars than others. And then behind it, I've given you all of the schools' enrollments from 2004 to 2013, so that you can take a look at those enrollments, K through six, to see how we're faring as a district. And then I did another one of pre-K through grade 12, and that's for 2009 through 2013. And then I did a very lengthy history from 1980 to the present, because I think you need to put things in perspective. Things have a way of going, ebbing and flowing. And I also wanted to point out that school choice was fairly nonexistent prior to 2002. So when you're looking at these numbers, if you're looking at enrollments prior to 2002, what you're seeing are resident enrollments, as compared to now. So it's a lot of information to absorb, to take a look at it. The other piece, too, that, we're a member of NESTEC, and we were able to send them a lot of information at the beginning of the year, and what they're going to give us is predictability for future trends using birth rates and census data. So I should be getting it fairly soon, because I think that's, you know, that's worth looking at. When we were talking last night, you know, I said I can only speak at Deerfield, but there are very few building permits going on. What I don't know is the aging population, if, you know, if they're moving out, and younger families are moving in. But we're certainly not seeing any major growth trends that I can see in Deerfield, and I haven't seen those in the other towns as well.
My, my reason for asking was partly because of what I'm experiencing at the school I work at, but also because it strikes me that we're, and you are, you can see the erosion over the last four or five years. So, going to definitely bear watching?
Definitely bears watching. Most of our school choice students do not, most of our school choice students who start in our elementary schools continue through seventh through 12th grade. The middle and high school get very few new school choice students, and by that, I mean about five. So even though Frontier has 129 school choice students, those are coming up from the elementary school, the majority of them.
Do we have any data on the number of kids we lose from six to seven?
We have, and it's been pretty constant, Jamie, for the last couple of years. Most of the ones that we lose from six to seven are going to private schools. And I think that's a very personal, you know, family choice, and often families know that from the get-go. And that's been a pretty steady number. We have a few students, and by that, probably less than five, who are choosing charter. Very few choose to choice out after that, and it's often for a very particular reason. A parent's job, something along those lines. But we're not seeing any Exodus. The technical school from eighth to ninth grade, that number fluctuates every year. And I think this year, there's only about 10 going, whereas the year before, there were about 18. So that is dependent upon the number of applications to the tech school.
And then there's just, in the, in the data columns, there's a couple of doublings. So in the Conway and Deerfield page, there's two 2009s and no 2010. It's not a big deal, but it, it's, I just wanted to make a note of it. And then on the Sunderland page?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You get, on Sunderland page, well, on the Sunderland table, there's two 2009s. And then on the Whately table, it goes 07, 08, 09, 08, 11, 12.
I just noticed that.
And they're not, just typos at the top.
No, you're right, you're right. Okay. We can make that correction. Yeah, somehow they duplicated, and I don't know why. And you're, this is the third committee, and you're the first one who's pointed them out.
They're grating on. I think it, it's sort of, not sort of, to me, it underscores the importance of school choice to our union and region. Twenty percent, 25% of the students in the region are school choice students. If we didn't have them, compared to, you said around 2002 is when school choice started, when we had close to 1,600 students from our towns, we'd have about, what, 1,200? 1,150 students right now in our schools.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty eye-opening, if you think of it most times.
Right, it is.
Sort of to emphasize what we've been experiencing, I think, across the area, across the country. Tons of schools, enrollments are down.
So I think it bears watching, you know, I think it bears paying attention to the data. I used to joke at Frontier that if school choice were the name of the town, it would be the largest sending town of the four, because that is where most of the kids came from.
Any other thoughts or comments? Thank you for putting those together.
You're welcome, and I'll correct those columns. I don't know why they duplicated that way.
So we are down to reports.
Just a quick question, sorry, slightly related. When was Frontier built?
19, well, they started in 96, construction was completed in 98.
Okay, so they evolved.
Yeah, and it was built when it was originally proposed. I mean, the capacity, they thought it would be over 1,000 students now, yeah.
Because when we built this school, we were projecting over 600 students.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
That was the projection 25 years ago.
We're bursting at the seams right now.
That was the, well, there were a lot fewer programs back then.
Specialized programs.
Right.
And there was provision for an addition if it was going to be needed, and all sorts of things. You wouldn't have any place space left, but you have an addition, so.
But that, that was what the capacity was, and that's what they predicted based upon the birth rate and enrollment test, yeah.
All the trends at that point in time, 20-plus, 25-years ago, pointed towards it. Which kind of underscores that we have to look at these numbers and look at the trends, but realize trends don't always play out as you can.
Right, absolutely.
They can be a trap. I mean, we could see, we could think, oh, we're trending downwards, we gotta start planning that way, and then something happens in another part of the Commonwealth, and all of a sudden, Western Mass looks mighty good to a bunch of people, and they move here. So, you know, trends are educated guesses, at best. Absolutely, but it's certainly worth taking along that look.
Yes.
So, your principals' report?
You should have a copy of this month's principals' report. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Writing instruction. So one of the district's initiatives this year is to really focus on a writer's workshop approach in the classroom, K six. And we even have our full-day preschool, they wanted to kind of jump in on that. And they're actually doing writing in our preschool, if you can imagine. So starting with storytelling and that kind of thing. But, and if you saw from the offerings from the November 5th in-service, there were many workshop breakout sessions that focused on writing instruction. But what it looks like on a day-to-day basis, when you walk through the hallways, what we're seeing, you would enter a classroom, and you're seeing students writing independently, you're seeing teachers conferencing, whether small groups or individual students. You would see a teacher doing a short mini lesson, about 10 to 12 minutes, the beginning. Kids go off and write independently, and they come back and they share. But the other piece that I'm really enjoying when I'm walking in classrooms is that we're here in Common Language now, which was one of the goals to having this district-wide initiative. And it helps students as they move from grade level to grade level. We're also seeing a lot of charts that are in classrooms, that students are using as resources to help them when they're composing personal narratives, or talking about watermelon stories and seed stories, and language that they're hearing on a day-to-day basis. But sitting in and talking to teachers, we're just, even though we're in the middle of November, it's so impressive to see the rigor, the volume of writing, in students' writing folders already at this point in the year, and the growth that they're making. So it's a very powerful program that comes from Teachers College, out in New York City. And teachers, it's not easy to do. What I can say, you know, from an education perspective, it's a very difficult and rigorous program, and the time that teachers have to put into planning, into reading about it, and to figuring out a teaching point, at a moment's notice, sitting next to a student, it's a very, very difficult program to teach, and our teachers are working very hard to do this. And they're working collaboratively, in teams, and we're already seeing the difference. So I'm thrilled, I can't wait to see where we are in June, and what our students are doing. So it's good stuff, really good stuff. The other piece I wanted to talk about was the math workshop approach. I'm glad Kayla's here, because she's kind of been involved in that with Meg Shuld, our math interventionist. And, you know, it's a very different approach to teaching math. So when you walk into a classroom, what you would see is, and we brought Meg on as our math interventionist, this is her third year now in this role, team teaching. So you're seeing true parallel teaching at its best. You'd walk into a classroom, Kayla might be working with a small group of students, Meg Shuld is working with a small group of students. They're doing direct instruction, and then other students could be working either in pairs, or working independently, and they're rotating. So they're shifting from one teacher to the next, but they're really getting targeted direct instruction, and then there's time for independent work as well. But it's really impressive, and when you walk into a classroom, the noise level, it's just this perfect little hum of students working. I don't know if Kayla, if you want to add any comments to that, or?
No, it's been great for my whole time this year. I mean, if I just said, I would be able to do, but having the resources of Meg, and I have an instructional assistant this year, so it's been, you know, it's been great for my room, but I do think it'd be hard to implement in other classes, without the resources.
It's really, it's impressive to watch, Meg's doing it with other teachers as well. But it's something that's definitely been a very effective approach to teaching math, and a different one. So we certainly have teachers that are thinking out of the box. I listed a couple of school-based activities. We had Eaglebrook Strings, they had asked if they could come over and perform for us, and that was really nice. We had one alumni who was actually performing on stage. We also had our Mix It Up Day, that's facilitated by sixth grade every year, it's a tradition. And, you know, I walked into the cafeteria to see, and what happens is, I don't know if anyone has heard about the details of how it's kind of run, but the students, they're eating lunch at a different table, so they are truly mixing it up, and meeting new faces and new people, but the sixth grade ambassadors are facilitating conversation with dialogue with conversation starters at each table. And it was the quietest lunch, those periods were the quietest lunch periods. The cafeteria manager said, can we do this every week? But it was really, it was great, because the student ambassadors took their roles so seriously. They were so mature about it, and even working with our younger students, but that was a very very successful day. And our, one of our first, our Arts Festival Day, there was a meeting today, a planning meeting, we were unable to attend, we were tied up at another meeting, but they will be having monthly meetings to plan. Parents were invited to get involved in that. Catherine Rashat, the art teacher, and Janet Ryan, music teacher, are kind of spearheading it, and the theme this year is Italy, so more to come. And Marty already spoke to the in-service day. I just listed some of the offerings that were there, but you have the handout, and I had mentioned the new doors, which are coming next week, hopefully with the install date of Friday, but it'll definitely take more than one day. And the other piece that I wanted to speak to is something that we, has sort of become a tradition now in the district. During parent teacher conference days, the instructional assistants are participating in workshops while the teachers are conferencing, and these workshops follow a similar model to the, our November 5th in-service day, where our own faculty, who are available and not as involved in conferences, are facilitating those. And we have a lot of talent, a lot of experts in this district, and we're trying to tap those resources. So, you can see some of the offerings that were listed there, and I know Sarah and Louise did a survey to get feedback from the IAs, and it was very positive as well, so we're pleased, and we'll continue that in April.
Great.
So, that's all we have. Any questions I could answer?
I don't see any. Ms. Barrett?
Well, I already talked about the first two, and I'll beat Jamie to the punch, the information's correct but the heading's wrong?
I was going to let that remain.
I know, well, I thought, oh. But I did, just want to follow up, I did my goal-setting and objectives with the Joint School Committee on October 29th. I appreciate those of you who were able to come out for one more night. So, I had seven goals that I brought forward, and they were approved, and I'll do a mid-cycle review again with the committee in February. So, I knew it was a lot of information, and I think it was an hour and a half of me talking straight, and I appreciate you putting up with me on that. Last week, I did have the opportunity with five other school committee members to go to the MASC Mass Annual Conference on the Cape. Got a lot of information about the district-determined measures, the new park assessment and the retail mandate, as well as a lot of information regarding funding, which is really helpful for a new superintendent. So, you know, there's a lot of new initiatives that are coming down from the state along with the new evaluation document, and it often feels like your shoulders can only bear so much new information and new initiatives. So, I think the powers that be at the state are hearing this from people and are taking people's concerns seriously. We were to have a special meeting at Frontier tomorrow night at 7:00. This was to hear the reports from the subcommittee meetings, the long-range planning and the capital improvement, and they felt they needed more time, but, so we have rescheduled to January 23rd. And the reason I brought it up with you tonight is I did tell them that that's fine, and I would rather have thoughtful comments and things that were thrown together hurriedly, but it does mean that we will not be able to impact the budgeting process for this coming year, it'll be for next year. So, that's what I have. Wish you have any questions.
We are almost down to world record pace here. So, I don't know if anybody's noticing in the paper, but the Town of Deerfield is, has had recommendations made relative to their governance structure, select board, and strong suggestions made about the town administrator position, and I know that there's a public meeting coming up to discuss those results and actions, so I would encourage anyone that has any concerns or any thoughts as to town hall governance to certainly try and attend that session. I don't have my notes.
I think it's on the 20th.
I think you're right. I think that what's being recommended is long overdue, but you notice that there's some reluctance on the part of our select board to endorse all the recommendations that have been made, so I just point that out in case anyone has nothing to do on the 20th. So, no other business, then I think we're down to adjournment. Wow. And it's not even a world series? So, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So, then a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? It's unanimous.